Join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for today and the opportunity to come here again and do the business of our district. God, our thoughts and our actions and our words to the benefit of the district, the glory of you, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Dr. Case, the American flag for me, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Texas flag. The Texas flag over here.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one indivisible.
Last problem, nobody signed up to talk. Any of y'all who can talk? Thank you all for being here. Welcome. This is not going to be one of the 30-minute meetings. We have quite a bit of things to go through. Just heads up, here we go. First information, Employee of the Month. Okay. Never mind.
Before.
Yeah. I just skipped that part before. Just put on fast forward, we're good.
Okay. Mr. Yang, go ahead.
Okay. The State of Texas Rating School Districts under the, what they call the Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, this has been in place since the 2002-2003 school year, and we're required to have a hearing on the rating that our district receives. They rate the districts under the current system. There are seventeen or sixteen different items. There are six of the indicators that either have a yes or a no response, and the remaining ten are scored on a range of zero to one, zero to ten. The yes or no responses on five of the indicators can fail the district but don't contribute to the point total. Sabine ISD scored a zero because one of the questions, one of the yes or no questions was, was the annual financial report, the unmodified report, and for 2015-16, which is what this is based on, we did not have an unmodified report for that year. So as a result, our school district automatically gets an F substandard rating for this year. However, if you set that one thing aside that was due to the situation that was going on last year at this time.
I think we'd like to know specifically what we're talking about.
Okay. When the auditors were here, part of their annual requirements are to send letters to the seven board members requesting information from them, such as, do they have any knowledge of fraud, do they have any reason to believe that the administration's acting in a way they're not supposed to, do they know of any compliance issues, and various other questions. It was one of the board members that declined to return his letter response because the auditor had not participated in the fraud auditor that they had going on at that time. Because of that, their auditors had to issue a modified opinion because of what's called a scope limitation, because since they didn't get his letter back, they weren't able to know what he would have, he might have wanted to tell them, and since they didn't, they had to issue the scope limitation on the opinion. So that's why we had what's called a modified opinion, and because of that, we automatically failed schools first. This year, as you'll hear in a few minutes from Mrs. Jackson when she gets here, the 16-17 audit has an unmodified opinion on it. So we might have this problem next year when I come present the report for the 16-17 school year. Other than that, if you set that aside, as in prior years, we scored 100 out of the 100 possible points in the other categories that we could have that are either financial-related, attendance-related, student-to-staff ratio-related, a variety of different things. We scored all 100 points that we could have. Some of the areas that we did better for 15-16 than we did the prior year, they measure what are called the current assets to the current liabilities, or current, in financial terms, means that it's due within the next 12 months. Your current assets have a ratio of three to one or greater, and for last year, 15-16 our ratio was 4.45, and the year prior to that was 4.38. So we did better this year. And there's another ratio that's long-term liabilities to total assets. It has to be less than or equal to .6, or our students had increased 10% or more over the last five years. Our district's ratio was .502, which was under the ratio limitation, so we met that. And we met all of the remaining ones as well. So we scored all that we needed to. It was within the power of the administration and the school staff to take care of, to give us what we needed to with schools first. I'm glad to answer any questions that the board or the audience may have on the schools.
This is actually a public hearing. Y'all have the opportunity to speak, carry on conversation, ask questions, whatever.
Who issues this finance integrity rating?
Sir?
Who's in charge of this financial?
Who issues the first rating?
The State of Texas does. It comes down through the Texas Education Agency. They let us know in August what our preliminary rating is going to be, and if you want to appeal the rating for one reason or another, they give you a period of up through the first part of September to appeal it. If you haven't appealed it after that deadline date, then whatever the preliminary rating was becomes what your final rating was. They haven't actually come out and said what the official final ratings are at this point, but since we did not appeal our rating, we already know what our final ratings going to be. That's the same way we were last year. They didn't come out with the official ratings until we'd already started the process for the hearing last year.
Just for reference, we knew a year ago, when Ms. Jackson came and did the same presentation she's going to do tonight, when she came a year ago with her presentation, we knew at that time that somebody had turned in paperwork and that we failed that fine item, which causes us to fail the first rating. I mean, this is not new to us. It's just due process, what has to happen is he has to do his little rating thing, or his report of the rating thing, and make a public hearing, and so we all knew this a year ago.
Is there a penalty for appearing as zero?
Yes, financial and otherwise. It increases the amount of audit that has to be done, which costs us more money and just greatly pay them both.
And it also is not good on our district, because our district, out of the over 1,000 school districts in the State of Texas, our district was one of five in the state that had the F substandard rating out of all of them.
And every year since the beginning of this, since the beginning of time, we have either had a perfect score, near-perfect score on every other first rating since it's started. This is the first time that we did not have a perfect or near-perfect score, even though we did have a perfect score.
So in all the accountability measures that basically measures how the district is doing with taxpayer money and being stewards of taxpayer money and taking care of the budget appropriately, you're saying this district scored a 100% in all of those areas.
That's fair. We did everything that we needed to do from a district administration, a district staff point of view, and all that we could do to get the A to superior rating, but it was taken out of our hands by one of the board members.
Can we put an exact dollar figure on what that cost us?
That in itself, there's not a dollar limit. It means between that and the unmodified, I mean, that and the modified opinion from last year caused us to be deemed a higher-risk entity as far as federal, dealing with federal grants is concerned. It caused our audit expense to go up of at least $1,200. It'll also mean that from now on, every time we do anything with the federal government, even if it's through the Texas Education Agency, that financial column will be pulled out, and we'll be looking at it more thoroughly than we were in the past because of that.
Any other questions, comments? Everybody get it? All right, move on. All right, so we can. Recognize the camera, okay? Performance, if anybody wants to talk. So we're the information items.
Okay. I'd like to recognize or just let you know who the employees of the month were for last month. Jessica Riggs, our new middle school art teacher. Anitra Samples, teaches at the elementary campus. And also Monty Pepper, our new assistant principal that's sitting here tonight. So congratulations to these employees, and we certainly appreciate what they do each and every day. We can't go over the list of things of why they were selected, but it was nice to have those three named as employees of the month. And we appreciate that. Okay, accounts payable, any questions regarding accounts payable? I know y'all had that information already. Okay, and then the next item is student recognition. As you probably already know, we have already had one student to make it to a state-level competition this year, even though it's early in the school year. But he's passed. Yes, exactly, he's passed. And we will have more, we anticipate, especially in the academic area, but we want to recognize Armando Varedo tonight, and I asked Coach Jason Heffner to be here and kind of talk about Armando, and I will say this, Armando, that's quite an accomplishment. That's fantastic. We certainly appreciate not just your work ethic and all that, but the way you represented your school. It was outstanding. We appreciate you. And Coach Heffner, congratulations to you, because I know you had a hand in this also. So thank you for what you do. But go ahead, Armando.
Armando, you want to come up here? We do. I'll be very happy.
I think that's a loaded question.
He probably didn't want to come up here, but. And he brought his medals, by the way. Anybody want to see all the medals he won? He's got a nice collection of them here. I'm very honored to present Armando Varedo. He's a senior at Sabine High School, as Mr. Bryce said, and he has, he has advanced to the state cross-country meet, so he's a state qualifier. He was also the district champion in cross-country, and he really took ownership of his training more than any runner I've ever had. He really studies it, and you know, we talked about it going all the way back to last track season. He knew exactly what it would take for him to reach that level and make it to state, and you know, via letter, he followed through with his training, and he did a fantastic job. He ran under 18 minutes in every race. It's a 3.1 mile race that we do for varsity cross-country. And his best time was 17:09 at the Lindell meet on October 5th, and he and I had discussed that as well. We knew if he could get around the 17-minute mark, he would probably advance to state, and so we got there. And he got, let's see, he won district, led our varsity team to our second consecutive district championship, and then he placed 12th at the regional meet in Grand Prairie. That was back on October 23rd. And then at the state meet, he was 60th out of about 149 runners. But that was just a great experience for him to get down there and see all those runners. So we're very proud of him, and we're honored. If anybody wants new pictures or anything, here he is.
What is the time for top runner at state?
The top state champion runs 15:39.
That's all I wanted, five.
Right.
So there's probably somebody up there who runs 15.
And the fastest was 14:58.
Wow. Ronnie Benson, you go on the running track.
We're proud of you, and we appreciate what you do and the work that you put in. Okay? Thanks a lot. We appreciate you.
Okay. Ready to move on to consent items? All right. Unless there's something, somebody wants to pull out, we'll approve these as a group. If they're okay, get a motion to approve. Danny, get a second. Dr. Borchat, all in favor?
All four.
All four of us, top of Texas. Good thing we all four showed up.
Yes. All right, discussion. Okay, I'll just, Tony, you will be reading these hours, but before he does, what we do is, we're required to report the board training hours each year. Each board member is required to get a certain number of hours of training each year, and if you're, for the new board members, they are required to get 10 hours of training. Then there's also some local training they have to do. The veteran board members are required to get five hours of training. That training has to be reported at the last board meeting of the year, which normally is in December. December, we're not going to have a meeting, we're going to have training instead, so we're reporting it tonight. So with that in mind, Tony, if you would go ahead, do you have the board members telling you your hours?
Yeah. I think I just skipped over going to see what was next.
All right, the following board members have completed the requirements for continuing education for the year. Andrea Bates has 18 hours. Paul Franklin has seven and a half hours. Danny King has 18 and a half hours. Art Borchat with 14 and a half. Patty Pickle with 11 and a quarter. Tony Raymond with 11 and a half. Rushi Taylor with zero hours.
Are you ready?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We tend to first. Don't be bitter, you had a half. She only had 18.
And you still have three hours more coming next year.
I'm the eager one.
What happened to you?
What happened to you? What happened to you, Tony?
Very easily caught.
He's an overachiever.
Because, I don't remember. I didn't do anything wrong this year.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda will be board member discussion regarding the recent convention that we all attended. So I will turn that over to Tony on how he wants to.
Well, and I told Stacy, it doesn't do us any good to all go to a convention if we don't come back with anything to talk about. I mean, the education foundation is something that came from Tazby Convention. And in all the years I've gone, there's been several years that there was never even a conversation of, so what'd you learn? So this gives us an opportunity. If you had something you saw that you felt was interesting enough or need to be discussed, this is your opportunity to bring it up. And I know this is your very first time, and you hadn't been in several years, so I knew it was kind of different from what it was probably when you went before. So either of you have something you want to start with?
Sure, I just have a few quick comments. I did attend several different seminars, and the requirement for continued education is something that I'm very familiar with. As a dentist, we also have to have a certain number of continued education hours, so I have attended conventions every year from that perspective. And the comment I would simply make is the descriptions of these seminars and/or classes do not always point out what the actual content is when you sit down. It's a little awkward to get up in the middle of someone's talk or go to another one. So in that context, there were some of them that were more useful than others. I did talk with Mr. Bryce about some of the things I found out about. And the one comment, though, just like when I go to dental meetings, sometimes what you learn is that you're doing things right. And more often than not, in many of these courses, I would try to put myself, well, are we doing that at Sabine? And the answer was, yes. So in that context, it reinforced my belief that.
Makes you feel good when you find out, hey, we're not what that was.
So it wasn't a waste, even though there wasn't anything really that new to present, and that's all I have to say.
Danny, what'd you get out of that? I found it to be really an eye-opening experience. It was kind of like being a newbie over a kid in a candy store. I mean, you go in, they provide you with a book, and you've got many different topics that you can choose from, and pick your own flavor, so to speak. And I attended many, many sessions, some run by very large districts where they have multiple programs, and usually they came around to me and tell us about your school district, and I'm like, well, these guys are pulling corporate funds, right? And I'm like, really, we're a dot on the map, so we face a lot of challenges there. And I talked about the foundation that we started here to raise funds for our school district and kind of shared some ideas there. A lot of great ideas. One of the things I really did like, quite oftentimes, we forget the elderly in our community, they, let's say, let's include the people that don't have kids in school, they're paying taxes as well. There are a lot of school districts out there that are involving these people. They might have a pancake breakfast once a year, or an ice cream social in spring just to bring them in, and then they have the different kids, like from our department, from debate, what have you, FFA shop, and they share what they're doing here at the school. So it involves those members of the community that otherwise kind of get left out, and I thought that was a great idea, and I'd like to see us do something with regards to that. But I also learned that the presentation, you guys would just have to see it and believe it, but it was just a, it was a very emotional experience when Denton High School got up there and put on the show, and it was no, these kids started out chanting, "We're more than a test score." And let me tell you what our kids are more than a test score. We need to return control back to our local school districts. We have very well-educated board members that are voted in by our community, that know the needs of our community, working in concert with a very good superintendent. And we need to allow our teachers to teach what they feel will be most helpful to our kids.
Now, if you could think a thing for this, what I heard, "We're more than a test score" probably a dozen times in various.
Yes. But wouldn't you agree that performance?
Yeah, that's it. It was pretty impressive.
It was awesome.
Would you come over here?
Well, for me, this conference that we go to is more of our larger schools, and I went to one back in the winter that was more geared towards smaller schools than you. It's more things that we, to me, can use. But the one thing, I really didn't go to tons of classes at this one, but I went to the big sessions, and like I said, it was very political this year. I could tell that a lot of people were not very happy with our legislative session at all, like the main speakers. And then we had famous people that spoke to us this year, and I mean, like really famous, like John.
John Kilis.
Yeah, and I thought his story was really good, because I know that's kind of true to my heart, especially in this.
Just to give you some insight, real quick, John Kilis grew up in San Antonio in a family speaking Spanish, but he decided at a young age he wanted to be a journalist, but he couldn't be a journalist if he spoke Spanish, because nobody hired a journalist with a Spanish accent. So he made himself learn English and not have an accent just so he could get put on TV. Then years later, when he finally got a job, they figured out they needed somebody to go to Colombia, where South America somewhere, because the last guy that sent him down was white, and he got killed because the drug hoarders killed him because they couldn't figure out what he was there for, even though he was just a journalist. So we got this guy to speak Spanish, we'll just send him down there. So he got his first job, his big break, because he knew how to speak Spanish, and he was replacing the guy that got killed because he couldn't. So that's John Kilis' story.
Which we had a lot of Spanish speakers in our district. And then the other one was, I don't know if y'all know, Hill Harbor, he plays on, he used to be on one of the.
CSI shows, yeah.
Yeah, shows, and now he's on the new one, The Good Doctor or whatever. But anyway, I just thought it was really good about him, is sometimes we have to realize that, now, he was dealing more with gang, kids involved in gangs and stuff, and sometimes you have to quit worrying about what could be your danger and reach out to these kids, but you know, I just thought that was good, because I always feel like we need to reach out to those kids that don't necessarily have the parents that are backing them. I always worry about those kids, because you know, our kids are going to be fine, obviously we're willing to be on school board. But there's a lot of kids, even in our little small district, if their parents could care less if they're at school or not, and they do have some learning issues and things like that, that they don't have parents that are willing to help the school figure out what is going on with them, what can we do to help them, you know? So to me, sometimes your community, that's why I like community involvement in schools, because sometimes you can have community members that can help out with some of that kind of stuff, and helping encourage, like that's why I love that we have our mentoring program, because you don't realize just eating lunch with that child, how much you're actually encouraging them to stay in school, try to make good grades, maybe get involved in some kind of extracurricular activity or something like that. So that's really probably my takeaway, but like I said, it was very political. I don't think, in all the ones I've looked at, I've ever seen it this political.
Well, it was, of course, the legislative session here, and you know how that went. You know, the other side of that is our biggest advocate, Speaker of the House, is not running again, so that's going to be a big goal that has to be filled, which there's already a rally tomorrow, meeting tomorrow morning at nine in Longview at the Hilton, if any of y'all are interested in going regarding that.
All right, well, my, one that I thought would be really relevant and helpful is maximizing outcomes of either district and campus strategic plans. And a lot of that pertained to not just setting your superintendent goals based on some, hey, this sounds good, let's just do that, but what we've done, which we did prior to even this, but get with the principals and get with the administrators and get with the superintendent, and then come up with your long-range goals, and build your strategic plan, and even build your superintendent goals to align with what it is you're trying to accomplish, and put in measurable, you know, things that you can put in there to say, okay, this was a goal that we need to have done at the high school, and at the end of the day, this is a strategic plan, and this is a superintendent's goal that matches all the way back to that, this is what we're trying to accomplish. Anyway, but the aligning your district and campus goals was really good, and I went to, it's funny, I just noticed the names of these. I went to creating the 21st century learning environment, and then the next morning, I went to building the 21st century learning environment. Two totally different classes, and of course, I don't even know the names of them when I go to them, I just read what they're about. But anyway, but just doing things that make your facilities match how the kids learn in today's world. I mean, we have a junior high that was built in the 70s, and the kids today, obviously with tablets and touch phones and everything else, aren't learning the same way they were when that school was built, and we were having that conversation with the security staff the same way. It's just not the same, they're not the same kids as they were 30, 40 years ago. Legal update, the emerging trends in education was really good. The person that is, this was the great conversation, defending public education one community at a time. There is a guy named Jamie Vollmer, and it's V-O-L-L-M-E-R, and he has worked for the last 29 years to help schools and communities remove obstacles to student learning. to student learning. And so this was a guy that spoke about having, engaging your community to help better your school districts. And I thought his book, he was there to assign books at the end, it's really good. It's just the way he talks about using, you know, using your community, but also, like what he's talking about, we have a legislative that's all, legislative that are all about doing vouchers or whatever term they want to use this time to pay for private schools and Christian schools and all this other kind of stuff, and pulling money out of our public schools to give to those other places to educate kids. But yet, they get to pick and choose which kids they want to take, and they don't have to live by the same standards, but they're going to get our taxpayer money to do that with. And so it's defending public education one community at a time just means get the people that vote and that are involved and engaged to understand the concept of what it is going on, to make sure they're on your side and know what's up. Anyway, same way we did when we got our bond pass, just getting out there and getting the public educated. So anyway, a lot of, like what Andrea says, it was very political because of legislative update that, or the meeting that happened. It seemed like every time somebody gets on stage, they have something to comment about our legislators. But again, it was, it was a lot of information. You're there for three days, you start class at seven in the morning, you go to four, five o'clock in the afternoon. And, and I thoroughly enjoyed going. I mean, I've been going to them for years, but it is, it's thought-provoking when you're in a thing and you find something that you can bring back, whatever nugget it is. And again, like I said, the Education Foundation, one of the things that came from us going to Tassby. And so if we can get a little bit of it every time we go, that, that helps impact a classroom into a kid, then it is worth going. But if we don't ever have the conversation, if we come back and just move on, don't ever have, what did you get out of it? Then it's just, it's a waste of money. There's no reason for it. We can just do it online, or double online, we're done with it. So that's, and there is, if you don't know, there is a lot of things you can do online, there's classes you can take, there is a liver meeting, there are food boards, because there's no interaction, there's nobody there to feed from. Yeah. So anyway, thank you for that. All right, so the next thing is discuss facility planning meeting. Again, these out too. Have I given you? So I need to get this to you this way. I've got a couple here, y'all can have. Hey, Karen, come on in. Well, I guess somebody's not going to have you on. All right. A while back, we had a conversation of if we were going to build some new long-range goals, because our old thing, right, long-range goals included in elementary school and fixing the tennis court and the track and there was just various things going on that, all the new science labs. Anyway, so we had our long-range goals, but we've already accomplished probably 90% of everything that was on that list. So we decided we want to make a new list. And in doing so, we met with the principals, we had Randy involved because he's, you know, IT, a lot of the things that we've discussed might have something to do with him anyway. But what is important to the district? And the committee we put together was me, Paul, no, actually, me, Andrea, and Rusty, because Rusty's in California, he couldn't be there, so we had Paul help us out. But me, Andrea, and Paul met with the principals and they, okay, what do you need? If, you know, we're making these long-range goals and you had the checkbook, what would you like to spend it on? And so this could be over the course of the next year or so. Did I give you one?
No.
I'm sorry. But that's okay. Yeah. You give me a laptop, I'm going to give you two. This gives us a list of things that they felt like was necessary to help improve their campus. Through this list, we have some things that are district-wide, and we have some things that are just campus individual. Now, of this, now, the point of this was to come back and present this to the board, but with all both of you. So the idea was, the number one thing that everybody agreed on, all the principals said, yes, softball field is a necessity. The softball field has been a long time coming. I've been talking about it for probably 10 years, that we need a softball field, and we just haven't ever got that far. So the expectation is, once the old elementary school's out of the way, unless something's changed immediately or recently, that was the expectation, that we'll be a softball field across the street from the baseball field in the very near future. The next item on the list, surprisingly enough, everybody talked about security within, of course, except the elementary, it's all a brand-new facility. But the junior high and high school, security was the number one thing on their list. Not going into too many details, just no reason to air the laundry, but there's a lot of things about the old buildings because they were not built with security in mind, not the way they were designed. But since that conversation has occurred, we went to Tassby, we met with a security company, that security company has come to talk to Stacy. We're in the midst of getting a proposal of a small, medium, large, what's it going to cost us to update our facility, to increase our securities? Do we have a better idea of what's going on and have a better handle on what we can do about it, like what we had at the elementary? They never locked doors remotely, been able to, to see what's going on in classrooms or whatever, you know? But they are coming back with a proposal, and again, it's going to be a small, medium, large, what, you know, how much are we willing to bite off immediately, or maybe what we can do in the mid, in your future? It may be something we can do, some of it now, and eventually five years from now, finish, or just have to look at it, see what the proposal looks like. But that's on its way. I mean, it's, he's already made with people and their project frozen. The next thing is our maintenance. Several conversations with several people felt like maintenance wasn't up to snuff compared to what we wish it would be. Too many things are getting missed or on the list, the eternal list of, you know? But it's just not getting addressed in a timely manner. Things that, you know, you may see it and you tell it without, and they say, yeah, I'll get to it, but because it never got written down anywhere, it never even got to the list. And so our maintenance has been a big priority for some of the board members and some of the administrators, to say we want a, we want more focus on our maintenance. If that has to do with weeding, get the weeds out of the sidewalks, or it has to do with painting, which a lot of the stuff that you'll see down here in the campuses, there's things that it's very inexpensive to apply some paint to a room just to brighten it up and make it look newer again. But overall maintenance of the facilities, not cluttering up a room because it's not being used right now to the point that it's, you can't even walk through it because it has so much clutter in it because that just became the place to put everything, which I know we have rooms like that, I've seen them. So it just because nobody's in there right now, that becomes a storage room, even though it was a classroom last year, now it's a storage room. So maintenance was a priority for everybody in the room. I'm sorry, it was, it was a priority for most of the people in the room. But I know that we've had the conversation a couple of times, and of course, this is unofficial, but even because with the anticipated growth in the district, if we needed to, what was the upstairs, what was my junior high, the upstairs above the gym over there, could be used as classrooms again, as well as the parts next to the community building, which was newer part that was added on, all of that can be classrooms again. And if you walk in there right now, it'd look like a tornado hit. It looks like, you know, if everybody grabbed their crap and left as fast as they could, and it still looks like that from the day they moved out to go to the new elementary. And it's just, it's, it's, nobody's ever gone through there and straightened up, cleaned up or organized. It just looks like everybody grabbed their stuff and moved out as fast as they could. Coach Sean in the high school talked about we want to redo the office area, just some new carpet and paint, and the kitchen areas that need to be updated. We did the one bathroom that was up by the high school concession stand around the gym and basketball area. He wants the other bathrooms to be updated to look like that one, or at least updated like we did that one. The downstairs, where the shop area, we have an area that used to be a wood shop area. There's things in that room that have been down there for, my son is 19, he was in high school five years ago, and there's stuff still down there that was cluttered then that five years later is still down there cluttered. The better use of that area, replacing some carpet in some hallways. The choir room, I just have a question mark by the choir room, because I just found out in that meeting that we don't even use that choir room anymore, which I don't know what we use it for, but doors ain't locked. But next to the drama room, across from the band hall?
Oh, yeah, that, we, there's a choir room, I guess what Coach Sean would call the old choir room. I don't know, he's using it for book reading this way.
Okay. Anyway, he said he needed more science labs and more room for dual-credit classes, or dual-credit classes are growing. We're going to have to find a place to do some more of that. Want to put us, I don't know if he needed to finish painting or to paint various classrooms. And then the big expensive thing that he really talked about was the auditorium. We talked about, you know, the lights and the sound and stuff, that was all built, that building was built in 84. In the last 25 years, it's still the exact same sound, lights, sound, seats.
The lights and sound are the two biggest things.
Yeah. So that's, that's a necessity. It's just up to the board to make it a priority, or everyone want to put it on the list. In the library, he'd like for the carpet and furniture to be replaced in the library. And again, I don't know how old that furniture is, but it's certainly been there for the last 10, 12 years anyway. At the junior high, Mr. Reese wants to repaint, what is the break room, the room that the teachers use to make it look nicer. He says, you know, you don't have to do a whole lot, just paint it up, fix it up, make it look nicer. He wanted to update the locker rooms downstairs. I mean, he basically said you could tear out the shower, nobody uses it anyway, I'm not sure I want to do that, but the locker room need to be updated. That school was built in 70, and those are probably, very likely, the original lockers from 1970, and they got put in there. Library upgrade, same thing, paint furniture, and they want tint on the windows, that window that's right there that faces 1252.
Yeah, we've talked about all this. I mean, I don't, but that tint is tinted, that window is tinted. But yes, it needs to be dark, it would be great to fill that thing in.
He also said he'd like to remove carpet from the classrooms. You know, anybody that has allergies in their house, they take to remove their carpet because that's what holds most of the allergens. Multiply that times 300 kids and see what you get. Whatever else comes out of them. Bleachers and lights being upgraded. We're already talking to a company about bleachers, already got a bid on bleachers for the junior high and the high school. Is that something else on the agenda that we're going to talk about, or is that...
No, not tonight. I have the quotes already.
Okay.
And, you know, we need the LED lights in the gym, that's part of it.
Yeah, the bleachers from the lights bulb in the gym be updated. At the elementary, Ms. Bass says, you know, her brand-new facility, she didn't want to ask for too much, but she would like some shade over the playground to cover both where the equipment, where the kids play, because it gets hot, I mean, we're in Texas, we have a week or two of winter, but the, the kids, the equipment's hot for them to play on, and there's no place for them to sit away from the equipment. There's no shade anywhere, it's just all light open. I've heard a lot of playgrounds where they've built these great big, it's almost like four posts and a tarp over the whole thing where they can, the rain falls through a little bit, I mean, it's not waterproof, but it does provide a tremendous amount of shade for them. And she also wants tint applied over the windows in the cafeteria that faces south, I'm sorry, faces north, because that room has a projector and a screen, but because it's so bright in there, you can't use it because it's, it's too much sun. So they talked about what Coach Sean has, that front window over there that faces 1252, where it's almost like a mirror. I mean, that's just tint, that's all that is. All that faces 1252 is tint, where it mirrors the, the light out. He said, it's funny, the kids walk by and check their nose, and they check their teeth, and check everything else, they just sit there and look at that. So...
The man in the newspaper said it.
I know. She also needs the pads behind the basketball goals replaced. For whatever reason, those, the quality of those pads back there aren't holding up, but they're, they're already worn out. She's just saying, if we could look at that. And I know we discussed, there's, there is still some money left over from the bond that we could use to apply to this. So this may be something we can get done fairly quickly and then not even out of our budget. Then as far as district size, district-wide, we talked about having turf on the field for various reasons, between soccer and football and maintenance and everything else. The people that sell the stuff will tell you the ROI on it's not in a couple of years, that it actually can pay for itself, you know? It's a mathematical equation, somebody has to do the math and figure it out. But anyway, additional classroom space, again, that's what I was talking about a while ago, that we either have to figure out a way to apply, to put more kids in the same space or utilize more space. Don't know how that's going to work yet. Tennis courts need to be replaced. We put a Band-Aid on them a couple of years ago, or a year ago, or whatever it was. We didn't spend the money to completely redo them, we just, we painted them and pulled up the weeds and...
Resurfaced.
We did the surface, yes. Ag farm, if you have kids in ag, then you know what I'm talking about. It looks, it, it needs to be addressed. And then ADA compliant bathrooms at the football field. The football field bathrooms, I don't even know how long they've been there. They've been, I don't remember them not being there, so they've been there that long. But that bathroom was not built to be ADA compliant. I'm not sure we had ADA compliant buildings built, so. Anyway, this was just a summary of the conversation that we had. As a board, we're going to have to go through this and build some long-term goals. We can use these, we can make this the list, add to it, we can subtract from, we can do what we want to. But this was, this is what we got out of the meeting that we had with, with the administrators. This is a discussion, so you have the opportunity to discuss if you feel like it.
So discussion or not, what's our management plan of action?
We need to build a priority list.
So how do you want to go about it?
You also, you also have to have long-term plans and...
Short-term.
It doesn't have to be very short-term.
Oh, yeah.
Paint's easy.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the, that kind of stuff, it doesn't belong on the same list as turf.
Softball field.
Yeah, the large items you need to prioritize as long-range items and knock those off the list. The other is a separate list altogether.
You know, and also, it feels, some of that stuff leads back into the maintenance. I mean, it's, it is a little more than just mowing the yard and doing that kind of thing, but it is at some level on the list of maintenance items that need to be done, which is why maintenance is in the top two or three items list. It's just, it needs to be a focus, it needs to be a priority.
That's why there needs to be two lists.
And a point, but...
In formulating the list, it would be helpful to me if we could at least have ballpark cost numbers associated with each of these items. And I wasn't aware that there is some bond money available that maybe could be used for some of these projects.
But only at the elementary?
Only at the elementary.
Only at the elementary. The way the bond we voted was only for the elementary. We can't use that money.
But even that, I mean...
Yeah, I'm saying, the stuff at the elementary probably can be covered easily, but we made the promise when we passed the bond, that money was only for the elementary and not for any other dates. It was the way it was written. You voted, you voted for money to be put in the elementary. Yeah, it's not just what we said, it's what was written. But it was written that way on purpose. Any other discussion?
So what do we do now at this point? Are the committee going to make the things? We're asking, are we...
Now, I think what needs to happen is, let me separate this and make two lists, so we can...
Steve can take a lot of that off and make it as far as, give us back, these are the things that we need to talk to about a long-term goal. These items are maintenance, we're going to take care of those internally.
Yeah, what the board will need to do, just like we do last time. The board will prioritize, but you'll agree and pass a long-term facilities plan. And that will be the major items on there, won't be the other stuff.
You know, things like the softball field, and there's, there's some expensive items on here. I mean, there's small being large. You've got things like the security system, yeah, the bleachers, I mean...
Auditorium will be big.
Auditorium's going to be big.
But that is the next step, Dr. Moore-Chad, you're right, is putting price tags on these
Which, what you did for...
Approximate cost on all of them.
And that's how we went through and decided, okay, let's go ahead.
We can afford this.
We can afford this in there.
Yeah. And that's, that's where we got, that's how we got to where we are a year ago, for those that weren't here, is we were through, okay, we need to do this, we need to do that, we need to do this.
Tell them to track, confuse the court.
Science labs, some of that stuff. So, and even further back, it's how we're going to do athletic building. Anyway, I just, like I said, we had long-term goals, and we've accomplished all of it, all except the softball field has been done, so we attached them up and moved that up. Board team building, training, December 11th.
Okay. As we discussed in lieu of the board meeting December the 11th, we'll have team building training, that's required training each year. So we will do that on December the 11th. Now, the only question is what time, you know, that's something, if we can start it earlier, that's a three-hour thing. So if we can start, if we can start it forward, that'd be great. If we can't start it forward, just as soon as we can after that, probably, Mr. King, is that anything, is that something doable with your schedule, a four o'clock start?
Patty's retired. Dr. Moore Chat, four o'clock's good.
That's good.
It'd be up to Paul.
Paul.
Paul's good. He's out, so.
He's not here. What happened? You missed meeting.
He was at my work.
Missed meeting.
So, four o'clock?
Was started at four o'clock. Who wouldn't know anybody that have any influence on his schedule?
I think he pretty much can name his own schedule, believe it or not.
Okay, so we'll have a four o'clock start, December eleventh, here in the boardroom.
All right, action items. Ms. Jacks, it's your turn to play.
All right, welcome, Ms. Jacks. Thank you. You know, you've just finished up the one meeting, but we've been waiting here for four hours, so we will give you the floor and everyone has a copy after the first and probably send it to the board member.
Perfect. Well, I appreciate you laying your time and taking your time for accommodating my schedule with the rest of your super duty. And we did deliver the reports last week, and I hope you had an opportunity to look at them. So, I'm going to be fairly brief, but open to any questions that you may have or items for discussion that I may not include in what I have to say this evening. I'm going to focus first on page nine in the official report. That is the auditor's opinion on your financial statements. This year, your district earned an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of opinion that we can offer as an independent auditor. It is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. It means that based on the procedures we've performed in conducting your audit, we feel that your financial statements are materially accurate and they're presented fairly in accordance with the standards that are applicable to a school district type of entity. So, again, I congratulate the district on earning that opinion report this evening. There are two additional reports brought to you. They're near the back of your booklet. The first of those is required by government auditing standards, and that is a federal requirement for any entity that receives federal financial assistance. You receive substantial amounts of federal financial assistance, and so in that area of the audit, we evaluated your internal controls over financial reporting and also your compliance with the various rules and regulations and contracts and grant agreements and things of that nature, that if you had failed to comply, they can have financial implications for your school district. That also is a clean report. We did not identify any instances of material weakness in control, and we did not identify any incentive of noncompliance that were required to be reported under those auditing standards. And then finally, the third report of the evening is required by the Single Audit Act. This is commonly now required, referred to as Uniform Guidance. This area of the audit pays particular attention to the larger federal financial assistance programs that your district receives during the course of the audit year. This year, your major program by definition that was included in the single audit was the Special Education Funding Cluster, the IVEAD formula in preschool money. And we're happy to report that our conclusion on the operation of that fund, that funding source, is an opinion that it was properly managed and that the accounting for it was appropriate, and therefore we have no findings in that report as well. So, all of the reports this year are clean and without finding, and we are pleased to bring that information to you this evening. I'll make reference to a document that begins on page twelve and continues for four or five pages there. That is Management's Session and Analysis. If you'd like to know some more specific details that are performance-oriented this year, I would suggest that you go there for those details. That document is prepared by your staff, not by your auditors, but it is a required inclusion in the report. Over on page twenty is the district balance sheet. Your general fund ended the year with just over $1 million in its total fund balance. The total fund balance represented just over five months of operating expenditure in your general fund, a very healthy position there. The unassigned fund balance was at about four and a half months, and so that's the number at four and a half million. That is at the discretion of the board. It has some strings attached, other than the lawful operation of your school district. You have previously committed a whole over half million dollars for major maintenance items and some capital expenditures. Those remain unidentified, but it sounds to me like you have plenty of places to use that money and more. And so that fund operated on a very healthy financial position. Over on page twenty-two is your general fund revenue expenditure report, and you'll see there that your net change in fund balance for the year was 200,000 increase in fund balance. This year, you had some more money that financed some bus purchases and a major overhaul of some heating and cooling systems, and so your expenditures at 11.8 million were slightly inflated by those costs. That's a non-recurring item, obviously. You don't see that every year. But on pages twenty-four, twenty-five is your budget comparison, and you'll see there that your actual change in fund balance had an increase of 200,000 outperformed not only your original adopted budget, which provided to decrease fund balance by 260,000, but also your final, and which still was an expectation of a slight decline. So, good budget performance there as well. Back on pages twenty and twenty-one, you do have a number of other funds in your district that create fund balance. Their debt service fund had about $173,000 in its ending fund balance. The debt service fund had 391,000. There are a collection of other funds, and those are detailed for you on page forty-four, but the shared services arrangement for special education, there is some unexpended technology money that passed through a Region Seven operation a few years back that's available. And then the capital projects balance, which is the unexpended bond funds, that was just over $190,000. So, that's the amount that's been discussed available for use at your elementary school. And then the campus activities collectively all have $46,000 together. Over on page twenty-two, you'll see that in the government, other governmental funds, those tend to be fairly self-sufficient. They don't tend to gain a lot of money over time because a lot of those are reimbursement federal offerings anyway. The increase overall in that area was about 200,000, and that's almost all attributable to your debt service fund as you're accumulating resources to retire your debt on the elementary There are lots of disclosures, beginning on page twenty-seven in the notes. There's nothing there of significance or important that I feel like I need to point out to you. Over on page sixty-four and sixty-five is a summary of your uncollected property taxes, and you'll see that at the end of June, you had about $460,000 in total uncollected property taxes. That was a slight decrease from the prior year. So, looked like pretty good tax performance during this 2017 collection activity. And then finally, on pages sixty-six and sixty-seven are budget comparisons for your food service fund and your debt service fund, and you'll see the performance of both of those was slightly ahead of the budget expectation in both of those places as well. Does anyone have a question for me or something you would like to hear about that I didn't Well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And we appreciate the group that you sent over here. Again, just very professional and they get in here and get after it, that's for sure. Very, very good work, man.
I appreciate it.
And then that calendar on the agenda is going to require us to watch a video on that screen right there.
I need it.
Sorry, we're going to take action on Karen's time.
I'm making recommendations to record the holiday.
You get a motion? Dr. Moore Chat, you get a second? From Dan, all in favor? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jacks. Sarah, can we shine on your foreheads? Well, add, the last legislative update is, how many pages?
Eight hundred and fifty-six pages.
Eight hundred and fifty-six pages. So, instead of us having any expectation of reading eight hundred and fifty pages, they just decided to make a little short movie.
I did, I did bring all eight hundred and fifty-six pages.
Yeah, you're welcome to. Yeah, throw that real quick if you want to, or you can just watch this video.
And board members, I have something at your place that you can use, you can look at to go through while we're looking at this. If you, if you look at that packet, if you'll notice the red print in there, that's just items that they marked out. Anything you see in blue print is something new that they added, and then the green is what they moved and that kind of thing. So, as you go through, we'll talk about, or we'll talk about different policies up there on the screen, and you can go through this, follow along with this, and you'll see that there really are not many new changes that you'll see in local policy. Out of the eight hundred and fifty-six pages here, of course, most of it deals with legal, which legal hasn't, you know, we haven't ever said so on legal policy. But this is a little over ten minutes long, but it does go through this packet. If you'll follow along, it will make this process much easier so that we don't have to...
If anybody wants a packet, there's two or three of them up here that are not being used, if you want to play at home.
So, Randy, let's go ahead and begin this, and we'll go through this one, one local policy at a time. And if you have any questions during this, let us know some useful stuff.
Hello, and welcome to a brief overview of local policy recommendations included in Update 109, presented by Tasby Policy Service. A quick disclaimer, we'll be showing and discussing some policy text in this overview for illustrative purposes only. You want to make sure to review your own district's customized Update 109 materials for your specific policy recommendations. As is normally the case after a Texas legislative session, Update 109 includes both statutory changes to the legal policies made by Tasby Legal Services and local policy recommendations. For purposes of this overview, we will mention local policy recommendations and the bills that prompted the recommended revisions. Before we get started, here's a list of bills passed during the eighty-fifth legislative session that we will be mentioning in this overview and that affect local policy recommendations in this update. Throughout this overview, we will refer to Senate bills as SB and House bills as HB. You can always access these bills online at the site listed here. Be sure to access the enrolled version when you do. So, let's begin with the local policies included with Update 109. Provisions in BBE Local pertain to a board member's access to information. SB 1566 updated the education code to require that a district provide a trustee with requested information not later than the twentieth business day after the date the district receiv...
We're going to start reading.
...than the twentieth business day after the date the district receives the request with limited exceptions. While many of the changes to this statute will be listed in BBE Legal, most districts will notice a recommended revision in this local policy to provide response within the timeframes required of law. SB 1566 also contains a provision that requires districts to create a policy on visits to district campuses or other facilities by members of the board. To accommodate this policy requirement, you'll see a recommendation to add text to BBE Local referring to board member visits to district facilities. CKC Local is another policy affected by legislation. HB 332 requires a district to include in its multi-hazard emergency operations plan a policy for district property addressing reasonable security accommodations when the property is used as a polling place. While noted as a policy in the statute, the detail of these security measures would be addressed in the plan itself. Therefore, Policy Service is making a general recommendation at CKC Local to refer to this requirement being placed in the emergency operations plan. CNA Local is another policy recommended to be revised or added, depending on your district. SB 195 adjusted the provision of statute commonly referred to as hazardous route transportation funding to include areas within two miles of a campus where students not normally entitled to transportation funding provided by the state face a high risk of violence. In order to receive this hazardous route funding, TDA requires documentation of board action. The general policy recommendation for most districts will be for the board to adopt a resolution should the district apply for this type of funding. Some districts will note a recommended revision to delete text at CNA Local if the policy previously addressed eligibility for transportation when the district did not otherwise receive transportation funds. Since this may vary depending on the economic climate and the specific school year's budget, this text is recommended for deletion as it is not legally required to be addressed in policy.
That policy actually...
Policy CO Local is another policy code affected by state legislation, and this one also incorporates federal guidance. The eighty-fourth legislative session in 2013 required districts that operate prepaid meal cards or accounts to establish a grace period for students to continue to purchase meals without incurring interest or other fees. SB 1566 revised this law slightly to specifically require that each board establish this grace period. Federal law also provides guidance to those districts that participate in the federal school meal programs that procedures must be in place to handle students who have insufficient funds to purchase a meal. Finally, SB 725 provides that a policy may be adopted by a district to address food donations in accordance with the law addressed in this bill. To encompass the superintendent's authority to do this in administrative regulations, you'll see a recommended sentence to this effect at CO Local. Note that if you do not operate a prepaid meal card or account program, or if you do not participate in the federal meal programs, you'll want to reach out to your policy consultant at Tasby. For this next series of policies, we are going to go out of alphabetical order and concentrate on several policy recommendations resulting from a single bill, SB seven. SB seven refers primarily to educator misconduct and prompted several policy recommendations at codes DF Local, DH Local, and FFF Local. Most districts will see a recommendation to add a policy at code DF Local. SB seven permits the board to delegate certain suspension and termination actions for employees. Under the assumption that most boards would delegate authority to the superintendent, most districts will receive a policy reflecting this idea. If your board does not wish to delegate this authority through policy, you'll want to contact your Tasby policy consultant. DH Local is another policy affected by SB seven, but this policy is affected by numerous other bills we will mention in just a second. SB seven requires the adoption of a written policy addressing electronic communications between a school employee and a student enrolled in the district. Whereas most districts already addressed the use of electronic media in their policy, many districts will see some revisions to this text comply with the requirements of SB seven. Two other bills prompted recommended revisions to DH Local as well. HB 1935 changed the term illegal knife to location restricted knife. SB 1566 also contains a provision that districts can no longer prohibit any person, including an employee, who is a handgun license holder, from storing the firearm in a locked vehicle. DH Local includes recommended revisions to clarify exceptions to the prohibition of weapons on district property. Other recommendations to policy DH Local are attempts to clarify existing text and law. Most districts will see a recommendation to add a policy at FFF Local to address another portion of SB seven. The bill requires that a board adopt a policy to provide notice to the parent of a student with whom an educator is alleged to have engaged in certain misconduct. This policy is recommended to comply with this new statutory requirement. A reference to this policy has also been made at DH Local, FFG Local, and FFH Local. EHBAF Local is another local... EHBAF Local is another local policy recommended for revision at this update. SB 1398 made some significant revisions to the law related to the placement and use of video and audio recording in certain special education classrooms and other special education settings. You'll want to pay close attention to both the legal and local policy at this code and watch for changes in TDA rules associated with this law. FEA Local is included for revision at Update 109 based on SB 1152, which addresses a new excused absence under the compulsory attendance law for activities related to enlistment in a branch of the U.S. Armed Services or Texas National Guard. Because the statute references adoption of procedures, a policy revision is recommended to include this new excused absence. Another change prompted by SB 1566 is included with policy FFAA Local. SB 1566 requires that a board adopt a policy requiring an elementary school nurse who determines, or otherwise becomes aware, that a child enrolled in the school has lice must provide written or electronic notice to the parent of the affected child and to the parents of each child assigned to the same classroom as the affected child within specified timeframes. You'll want to review both the legal and local policies at FFAA for more information about notification of lice. SB 179, otherwise known as David's Law, prompts revisions to policy FFI Local on bullying. In addition to changing the definition of bullying, which you'll find in FFI Legal, the bill requires that certain issues be addressed in policy, such as anonymous reporting and providing the parties with notice of allegations that bullying has occurred. Cyberbullying and the district's authority to investigate and discipline for cyberbullying is also addressed at both FFI Legal and Local in Update 109. GBAA Local is recommended for revision at Update 109 based on HB 3107, which addresses when a district may charge a requister for the personnel time spent producing public information for inspection or duplication by a requister. The bill now authorizes a monthly limit and a yearly limit that a governmental body may establish before recuperating the personnel costs associated with complying with the request. The statute maintained thirty-six hours as the minimum yearly limit and has added no less than fifteen hours as the monthly limit. You might remember us briefly mentioning earlier that SB 1566 requires a specific policy on board member visits to district property, which Policy Service addresses at BBE Local. Because policy GKC Local speaks to visitors on campus, this policy contains some revisions to align with the new language at BBE Local. This policy will also likely contain recommended revisions for your district referring to the presence of sex offenders on a school campus, primarily recommended for clarification of existing law. SB 1566 also prompted a new policy for the majority of districts at code GKE. SB 1566 requires that a board adopt a policy allowing a principal to provide representatives of a patriotic society the opportunity to speak to students during regular school hours about membership in the society. New policy GKE Local with the subtitle Business Civic and Youth Groups is recommended to comply with this requirement. Finally, we want to briefly mention that although not legislatively driven, most districts will see a recommendation at Update 109 to delete the policy EJ Local referring to academic guidance and counseling services. The bulk of the duties of a school counselor and school counseling program are now driven either by law or district-developed procedures. Therefore, the policy is no longer necessary to maintain in the board policy manual. We hope you found this brief recap of Update 109 useful. Should you have any questions or want further clarification, please feel free to contact your Tasby policy consultant. You can find your consultant's contact information at policy.tasby.org.
Quick and easy. Okay, at this point, questions, concerns, anything you want to discuss in more detail? You notice any time that she was saying recommend policy, that's, they've already written it in here, that's what you were looking at. So any questions regarding the recommendations by Tasby Legal on the policies? Again, most of these are dealing with legal updates, and then some of the local ones do have to be adjusted because of legal. Yes?
Mr. Bryce, I think you were trying to make a comment during the video about CNA, about the district providing transportation.
Yeah, that particular one was talking about if the district receives funding from the state on transporting students because it's a dangerous area and that type thing. The school district has to request those fundings ordinarily. You won't get funding for those kids that live within a two-mile radius.
So we can still provide transportation?
Yes, we can still provide.
Okay.
I was just saying, you would get extra funding if a school district can prove that it is extremely dangerous.
We don't have a good...
And that's basically what they were talking about.
Well, as far as extremely dangerous, I mean, there's this pack of dogs that walk around the house every night. And they're pretty big dogs, too.
And lady dogs live by the Greenview Building, in the road in the way?
Yeah, there's like four of them.
Anything's worth a try, right?
Do more funding.
But yeah, that's what...
On this one, the food services management that we have to, the board has to set...
And we already have in place...
Yeah, we've already got that.
A ten-dollar limit on that.
We don't have to change what we already have based on this new...
Correct. All right, that's done for us. And what they did was take our local policy as it was and change it to what needed to be, which doesn't change what you guys have already decided on the ten dollars.
Yeah, it is, I said, that new law that goes past at patriotic organizations and that really is like, it's like the Boy Scout law. That Boy Scouts have an opportunity to come to elementary schools and recruit their our schools, because I'm part of the organization that does that, that school districts will not allow the Cub Scouts to come and speak to their kids. And just this past September, we're like, there's a law that says we can, and we sure appreciate your cooperation, but we had a superintendent say, no.
I thought it was interesting that they even put a timing on it, you know, in the law, so that was interesting.
Don't be taking that for granted.
You'd go a lot better if the kids were sent out of this.
Okay, any other questions? And again, even after these go into effect, feel free to get with me if you have questions, you know, as we go, anything that may come up. Also, as she stated on there, know that even when laws are passed, it does take TDA a little while to get rules written regarding the law, so they're still working on some of those, although most of them are completed. So if there's no other discussion, I would make a recommendation to approve Update 109 as presented.
Your motion?
I like the motion.
Okay, get a second. Dr. Morchad, all in favor? Okay.
Dr. Morchad, did you bet you'd make a long one?
Come here. You know, it's been working.
District Board, the Greg Appraisal District Board of Directors nominees.
Okay. Again, as we do every other year, the need to cast our votes for the Greg Appraisal Board, we made, if you remember, there were some changes made the last time we did this. As far as the board members on the appraisal board, we have, since that time, had a change of the chief appraiser. Chief Appraiser no longer is Tom Hayes, but the chief appraiser now is Libby Neal, I believe, Libby Neely. And anyway, we do have one person that is going off of the board, and that person is, has the nomination, has been replaced by Keith Honey, which is in Longview District. But basically, what we have as a school district, we have one hundred and thirty-nine votes. So this board can choose to put all one hundred and thirty-nine votes towards one single person, or you can split it five different ways if you'd like. We do have two people on this board that I think we would like to continue to keep on the board because they are local, and that is AP Merritt and Julie Woods. So just my suggestion would be to keep our votes with those two people, or at least one of those two if you want to put them all there. Discussion, questions, or anything like that regarding these candidates?
How many votes did you say we had?
We have one hundred and thirty-nine.
So not divisible by two.
No, we can go...
The thing of it is, AP will get all of Kilgore's.
Yeah.
Julie will probably get all of Kilgore's.
What were those three names?
AP Merritt and Julie Woods. Julie's born and raised in Kilgore, AP Merritt, of course, from Kilgore. The rest of the people are more Longview people.
Last time we did this, we did split our votes with, between those two candidates.
I don't have a preference one way or the other. We do half a man for whatever we want to do.
As close to half as we can.
Yeah. Motion?
Let's go ahead. I make a motion that we vote seventy of our assigned votes to AP Merritt and sixty-nine votes to Ms. Woods.
Can you get a second?
Oh, my God.
Second, Danny?
AP Merritt.
Sixty-nine to Julie?
Chip toes, one hundred and thirty-nine.
You're exactly correct.
All in favor?
Okay, our final item on the agenda is the district improvement plan. As you know, we revise the district improvement plan each year depending on what our needs are with our students, so Miss Yates, if you would go ahead and take that.
Our district improvement plan this year, we have a few additions to it. If you'll look at, well, of course, y'all know that the district improvement is always a working document, can be revised and added to at any time, accordingly, that we see that. Also, like I said, we have a few additions to the plan, as well as our scores updated on all core subjects above the status that's based on the sixteen-seventeen taper. Also, our new instructional technologist position wanted us to put that position into any of the people responsible places where it might apply to his responsibilities. On our strategies that we added, if you'll look at, well, you don't have to look, and I won't read it to you for saving, I'll go one, objectives one, two, three, four, and five on pages four, six, eight, eleven, and thirteen. Basically, it's the same strategy, but for the different core subjects. Training for teachers to be knowledgeable about how to teach the written social, or social studies teacs, by breaking down skills within the teacs, social studies teacs, BLAR teacs, math teacs, writing teacs, and song and steechs. And we want to focus on and target on making sure those teachers know how to break those skills down within those teacs. We want to show growth, and that's a new thing. We really want to show value and growth each year, and we really want to focus on inexperienced teachers that might not know those teacs and standards as well as our veteran teachers. And we want to make sure that those teaching practices that they deliver to their students are effective and knowledgeable with that. Page seventeen, go one, objective eight. We added training for teachers in the instructional rounds to develop a shared understanding of what effective instruction looks like and what the district needs to do to support that. So we want to really build some common instructional observation ground within our administration teams and our teacher teams, and then our administration slash teacher teams. We would like to see, and my vision is to see, teams that go out, and we had a common ground of what we know according to those classrooms I'm looking for, not to supervise, not to evaluate, but to observe the instruction going on in the classroom. Also, on page sixteen, objective seven, we'll back it up just one second. We added the partnership of Kilgore College with the Health Science Program to promote the capacity of the program. Also, on page eighteen, objective eight, there's too many strategies added to that objective, and that is reviewing our state assessments results to evaluate growth in all tested areas. Like I said, we are focusing and really targeting on growth and value, target areas that need improvement, support teachers in the effective teaching practices. And the next movement under that objective is increase district awareness on importance and provide training on higher-level questioning strategies to improve student-to-student interactions, elicit deeper and critical thinking, length of student responses, and relevant questions posed by the students. Um, let's see, I think that is it for all of our strategies that we have added. What we have left is all relevant to what our goals are, and we are still aligned to what we are wanting to obtain and wanting to improve on. And that is pretty much it for the improvement. And like I said, if there's anything that arises could be here, and we, as a DBIC committee, feel like that we need to address that, it will be taken into hand, we will discuss it, and we will add it if we need to. And we also, I'll be great to you if that change already was changed or not. Any questions?
And that's just highlighting some of the changes that were made. You know what's in the plan already, you know, the things that we've been working on. But also, one thing that changes in here, of course, is the dollars that are spent on specific, in specific areas where they're be titled Title I or Title II. That always changes throughout here. And what we have here is the starting point, and hopefully, at our campuses, that is exactly what we're spending the money on, or it is. But the final dollar amount, of course, fluctuates by the time of the year, the year end, so. And that will be addressed and changed as we go.
The teacs is essential knowledge and skills, just, yeah, Texas essential knowledge and skills for the teacs. That's what they tell us that we have to teach. That's what that is.
Yes, Ms. Yates, I just wanted to make a comment. I appreciate that the DBIC reviews this and modifies as needed, taking into context the great quote that Mr. Raymond gave about, or Andrea, we're not, students saying, we're not just a test score. And sometimes, as we look at documents like this, it seems that we're only focused on test scores and data and teacs sometimes. But what I was trying to roll back into is the mission statement caught my eye for two reasons. One is, I like it because it's not a test-driven mission statement. It comes about trying to make our students lifelong learners and a bunch of other stuff. In that, it drove me nuts that seventy-seven words of the mission statement is all one run-on sentence. It needs some periods in there somewhere.
That is a responsibility of the board.
Oh, great.
Have you actually been complaining about that for quite some time?
I just kept expecting a period.
Better missions taken for our long-term goals.
You're exactly right.
And to piggyback off that, mission statements are to be revised and tweaked. It's kind of a working statement as well.
I think it's a bit of a place for some time.
It's way too long. Way too wordy.
I was gonna add something to what Art said, and back to what I said earlier, you know, I think, I think it's very difficult. There's such a fine line between a freshman and a graduate college, and we need to work on trying to smooth that transition. And something that I liked that you said, I was listening very carefully, about, actually... And something that I liked that you said, I was listening very carefully, about actually talking about getting more interaction among the students and fostering an environment where there's more critical thinking. Because what are they going to do when they get to college? That's when they're going to have to apply concepts. And I don't think we're doing a very good, no, I think, I don't think the transition's there yet.
It's always important.
I think we could do a better job. So I like to hear things like that.
It's always something that's at the front of our, our goals. Very abstract in terms of delivery, so it's-
Well, there's more, there's more than one way to skin it. You know, I know when, way back when dinosaurs were roaming around in 2000, when I was attending class at Baylor, and it was very difficult for me because I was black and white, and there's a lot of, if you could make a good argument from a professor, you would get good marks versus having a set answer. You know, there are certain things where you do have set answers, but there's also more than one way to skin it.
Anyone else?
Okay, all good? I get a motion for adjournment? Oh, we got a, bring that party, bring the people, attend. Recommendation to approve, we get a motion. Danny? Second. Dr. Morchad? All in favor? Okay, motion to adjourn. Dr. Morchad? Second. Danny?
You can do it all night, why not?
I was just wiping my hands. Resting my- All in favor? Thank you both for being here.
Tell these answers closely to motion.